Okay, I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. We'll stand and do the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a roll call, please.
Leslie, here. Paul Beagle.
Here.
Katie.
Here.
Junior.
Here.
Isaac.
Here.
Brenda.
Here.
Hallkeeper.
Here.
Alright, so we have everyone here. We need to introduce the individuals on Zoom for the record. So, so Mr. Mayor, you have Jim Rollins, Kathy Street, Carl La Jimenez, Renee Mele, and Cornell. I'm not sure who.
Fallen.
Fallen. Okay, welcome, thank you. We have some introductions in Board and Fire here. We have Chief Hughes who has a presentation. So, welcome to Board and Fire for attending our City Council meeting today. We do actually have just our pre-arranged presentation. Are you ready, Chief Hughes?
Yeah, you guys are ready.
Clear.
You need to start over the minutes.
Minutes.
Yeah, we have approved minutes. Oh. I skipped right over that, thank you. I got too excited for you.
Thank you.
So, we need to approve the minutes of June 8, 2021. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from June 8, 2021.
I'll second that.
As written. Okay, I got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion about that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? June 17, 2021, special meeting.
I'd like to move to approve the June 17 special meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion that anybody would like to have over those? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes, June 30, 2021, a special meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from June 30, 2021, special meeting.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Great question. I don't think we want that.
Oh, for the end of this. I'm not sure what the, so unless you see an issue with them. I think anyone could.
Just my own chair.
So, we have a motion in a second, and that was our discussion. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Alright, so before we go to the pre-arranged presentation. How's her? Yes. No. Thank you. I got ahead of myself. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to present this small presentation. I think it's important as community leaders that you have a fair understanding of what our EMS delivery system looks like, and where we're trying to head with it. So, before I pop into the presentation, first, I want to give you some background and let you understand that I do have a handshake agreement with the Health District on improving EMS delivery in Boardman and hopefully Northern Moro County. So, currently, on the fire side of things, we're on duty 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. We meet the national standards. We're out of, which means we get out the door during the daytime in under 60 seconds, and at night in under 85 seconds. We deliver EMS as well as fire and rescue, and our personnel are trained to a higher level. The ambulance has a paramedic, and we have intermediates which provide life, advanced life support, also known as ALS. So, we have those capabilities too. Currently, the EMS transport delivery system is a single-paid person supplemented by volunteer staff. So, that system works really, really well in smaller communities with less call volume. You guys know better than I do. Boardman is continuing to grow, so our call volume is continuing to increase. So, that system is kind of inadequate. So, I'm proposing that we move from a volunteer-paid combination system to a full-time, 24 hours a day, meeting the national standard system. Now, the model in the US is, and is roughly 80 to 90%, is a fire EMS-based model. What that means is that the ambulance personnel are cross-trained as firefighter EMTs, and it's very, you know, you can look just down the 84th corridor. You'll see the DOWS, Yvadilla County Fire Department, and Pendleton are examples close by. So, the model that I'm proposing is not mine. This is a national standard. That's what I'm trying to do, to implement here in work. And I'll just kind of briefly go through this presentation, and if you have any questions, stop me at any time, and I'll answer your questions. So, I'm just going to pop through this real quick. So, by having a partnership with Moro County Health District and Board and Fire Rescue, basically, that takes all of our resources, that combines them, so that we can provide 24 hours a day service. We currently have a fire station. We're, as you know, we're building a new one that has sleeping quarters in it, kitchen, facilities for firefighters and EMTs to live 7 days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year within the facility. And currently, the Health District has personnel, and they don't have the infrastructure. So, there's no point in duplicating those systems with the infrastructure. So, what I'm proposing, the primary goal will help improve emergency services. They'll provide 24-hour-a-day onsite staffing. It will reduce medical transport get-out times. That time is the nationalized, as you can see, there is 60 seconds. Currently, the ambulance is roughly 7 minutes and 3 seconds. Will reduce on-scene times by the system. Currently, by the time they roll, get to the scene, 11 minutes and 23 seconds. Going to a national system, we're going to reduce that to about 6 minutes. And you'll see why here, and why it's important here in just a second. Got a break, right? There we go. You guys still have a lot of time?
Uh, what did I say?
So, basically, by reducing that get-out time, and that on-scene time, that 11 minutes and 23 seconds, that reduces the patient out in the field to the appropriate receiving facility. That could be Good Shepherd, that could be Cadillac. It just depends on the type of patient that we've encountered for that day. By going to this system, then it maintains advanced life support capabilities 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. In the current system, if the medic or ALS person takes vacation, for example, sometimes that's filled with a basic life support person. And so, I would guarantee that we'd always have ALS capabilities on this first outpatient. And then, we eliminate the medical transport downtime. So, occasionally, they have, because they're relying heavily on a volunteer system to drive the ambulance, occasionally, they have troubles trying to get a volunteer to fill that position. In most cases, if we're not capable as the fire department to provide a driver for them, they'll, that's why I consider down-staffing or putting that ambulance out of service until they can find a driver, which means we have to wait for irrigan to come out to do the transport. And the system we've developed, again, a national system. We've had overtime built into that system. The firefighters and EMTs can sign up to take that volunteer positions, and in the worst-case scenario, we'll mandatory somebody to work that position. So, it's always filled. We're never understaffed. So, some of the positive outcomes from the primary goal, it would increase fire suppression capabilities because we would be cross-training our staff. So, right now, you have three firefighters on fire engine, and you have two EMTs on an ambulance. If they're cross-trained, then I basically have increased my firefighter capabilities by 50%. So, which is, you know, awesome. 95, 7% somewhere in there are EMS calls. So, it doesn't make sense for me to go to the taxpayers and say, hey, I need another three firefighters or even two, because 90% of our calls are EMS. So, we concentrate on EMS, but we cross-train those EMTs to be firefighters. So, like this afternoon, when we have the fire over on Main and Wilson, instead of putting three firefighters on that call, I can put five, and then I can attack from different sides. So, just some reasons why it's a good model to have. We increase rescue capabilities, public education contacts. So, one of the things that we do is we do a lot of CPR classes. We reach out to the high schools, the elementary schools, and provide education there. And so, this would give us an opportunity to be at two places at one time, so to speak. We also do business inspections at no cost to the, to our business owners. We go in there and we do an inspection and show them some of the things that they could do to reduce the possibility of having a fire. Currently, the Fire District has one medical director, and the Health District has its own medical director. By coming into a partnership, we could work under the same medical director, working under the same protocols. Currently, two separate systems. So, we have different policies and procedures. We could be working under one management, one policy, set of policies, one set of procedures. Personnel would have, all personnel would have face-to-face contact with the supervisor. So, in this fire-based EMS system, the engine company officer, which is Captain Cole tonight, everybody reports to him while he's in charge of his ship. And in that way, if there's an issue, they can go directly to him, or he can correct issues on fly. So, which is also a nice thing to have available to you. And then, of course, we would all be receiving the same education and training. We'd all go to the same training and receive the same education, and it's not just a two-separate system, like, you know, EMS people, you stay there while we go out on the boat and perform a rescue. So, how do, this is my, just again, how I'm thinking of probably achieve some of these, this primary goal. Currently, the Health District could hire four additional people. It costs them basically $360,000. The Health District could build infrastructure to facilitate the 24-hour onsite personnel within their own system, and it costs them roughly 750 to 1.2. I know this because we're right in the middle of building the fire station. I can tell you what each room is costing, costing us. And you guys all know what building materials are like right now. It's crazy. So. So, here's my solution. We partnership, we create a partnership with both districts, and combine our resources to provide 24/7, 365 days a year service. The Health District would contract with the Fire District to manage the personnel. So, the personnel would be hired and work for the Fire District. Okay? That, that's huge, because I came from a system where I was a paramedic and a private paramedic in a city firehouse, and it wasn't pretty. We were extremely busy, but our only, only duty that we were required to do was wash dishes. Well, the system, we ran 20 calls on a 24-hour shift, so 4 o'clock in the morning, we're washing dishes. And so, I just didn't want to create a conflict between the EMS personnel and the fire personnel. If we're all under the same management, same policies, then there's no conflict. The Health District will maintain ownership of all their equipment. They'll stay, they'll say Moro County Health District on it. We're working currently with, with the Health District and the county on getting a transport license, because we do have an ambulance that's licensed. We just don't have the ability to do transports. We have to get permission by the county to do that. And so, if the current ambulance was out on a call, we could deploy our ambulance, run that call, transport that person without any delay, or waiting for another ambulance to come from irrigan or Yvadilla County. And when I say all transport vehicles, so my ambulance has the big Boardman Fire logo on it. I have no problem putting Moro County Health District's logo on the door, showing that we're partners. The Health District would remain, retain all the billing responsibility. So, currently, they take care of, obviously, any transports. They're, they're in charge of that revenue. Even if I transported somebody, I'd want them to maintain that responsibility, because I don't have the staff or the knowledge to do so. And if we transport, they can just pull an admin fee, that kind of thing, off, off the transport. The District, the Fire District would provide management and oversight of ship personnel, as I stated earlier. There'd be direct face-to-face supervision, which comes with value evaluations and all sorts of other things that most employers want to have. The Fire District would provide the 24-hour-a-day living facility for both medical and fire personnel. The Fire District would provide ambulance staffing guaranteed 24/7, 365, which means the ambulance will never be understaffed or unstaffed at all. We also provide our own maintenance, so we do our own well changes and that sort of thing. We can provide that for the Health District as well. And then, because of my experience in fire EMS delivery systems, I think I can show the Health District how to increase revenue and reduce costs. And there's other revenue opportunities that are afforded, the Fire District, that aren't afforded to the Health District, although they have a pretty cool program themselves, given the fact that they're a proper mobile location. But we can still expand on those. And then, obviously, when the Health District goes out for its five-year temporary levy, which is currently a 39 cents per thousand, if needed, and we need to increase that, obviously, the Health, I mean, the Fire District would help support that levy. Now, I know there's a lot of dynamics involved in that, whether the South End would want an increase or the North End. And, you know, I don't know how to tell you to navigate through those, but again, we've come up with a game plan. My position is you just be transparent and give them all the information you can, so you can make a good decision. And so, basically, in a nutshell, that is the presentation. I know it was speedy, but I wanted to be able to answer any questions and any concerns, any insights that's, any rumor control, anything like that, that I could answer on here on here. Yes, ma'am?
Why me, the limits?
Okay, here we go.
Um, is the county interested in being your partner?
So, right now, Moro County Health District is, we have a handshake agreement. So, what I mean by that is we're currently talking. I think that in all honesty, given the dynamics of the Health District in the last few months, I need to earn the new CEO's trust. And so, I think that in time, we'll get there. But I don't think it's going to happen fast. Does that make, so that, the Health District is different from the county.
No, I don't.
Okay.
I do know that.
Okay.
But I, we, um, and with the special district dollars, how would that work with the ambulance to the fire department?
So, how I envision that is right now, just like everywhere, I have a budget for personnel. They have a budget for personnel. They could break that down between Boardman, irrigan, they could break all that down. And then, so our current budget for personnel for Boardman, and I would try to work with, friends, or ask them, hey, can we offset that somehow? And the way I'm looking at it is, if they're not having to provide a manager, if they're not having to provide electricity and an IT person and all that stuff, that can roll, those costs can roll into personnel, because I'm already absorbing those. I have them already. It's not going to, by having two more people live in the fire station, it's not going to increase my electricity load. You see what I'm saying? So, it is what it is.
Um, so, what are you asking with?
I'm not asking anything but some support, okay? I'm just asking, first off, I wanted everybody here, because you're leaders, and you're out there, and I'm sure you get questions all the time about the fire, and even though we're separate entities, I just want you to be informed, and then be willing to support this partnership while we try to grow it, because I truly believe that's what's best for the City of Boardman and North Moro County as a whole. And I'll be honest with you, I'm not only asking for Boardman's ambulance, I'm asking for irrigans as well. So, I'm asking to supplement that whole Northern end. If they only give me Boardman, that's a good start.
Chief Hughes came and spoke with me the other day, and I said, you know, I'm not in a position to make decisions, but I really think if you, what you need is community support, and I would suggest that you come and speak to the City Council. Because this, this is a, do I get to do my presentation?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll jump on board.
Okay.
Roll with it. There you go.
When, when you take how much the evaluation of just the City of Boardman on your taxes, you know, you're going to get sick of me sending this stuff out to you guys. But at the Health District's taxing rate, which is 60 cents, not, and that doesn't include the local option, they're just regular tax, is 60 cents. Boardman pays about $585,000 to the Health District. And so, I think you need to think, what am I getting? And a lot of money. I mean, I can hire, even if you figure an employee costs you 100,000 apiece, you know, you're up to at least five employees. So, and what we're getting right now is an ambulance hall with an ambulance with one person and volunteers. And the volunteer pool is short, small. What are, it's small, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, and that's not just, you know, in Boardman. That's in the national, both on the ambulance side and the fire side. So, it's not just, just Boardman.
So, you're depending on, you know, an emergency at your house, and hoping that, and the other thing, because I pursued this a little. Those figures I put in your packet about the, how much your transportation is out on Main Street, that wasn't by accident. I put it then there, so I want you to listen, I want you to look at it, I want you to pay attention. Because this isn't Boardman 10 years ago. When I pulled up to the stop sign, I looked both ways, and I went. Now, you're lucky if you can get from one side of town to the other side of town in five minutes, because you gotta wait for six cars to go this way and another 12 to go that way.
Ask Tony, how long does it take to get from your house to the ambulance hall?
Um.
I mean, some days.
Like in the middle of the night, or?
Well.
Five minutes.
It's, it's about a five-minute commute.
Yeah.
It's harder in the day. Nighttime is a little easier.
Yeah.
You can't make a left turn to Main Street.
You can't make a left turn other than the street, no.
Unless you want to tip somebody off early past.
But, you know, you just, I, so I just thought that he should come, and because I think now we, as a community, we need to start stepping up a tad bit and looking out for ourselves. So, now I have a question for you.
Sure.
You said, are you, I didn't quite understand what you said about the ambulance crew. Are they going to be trained to be firefighters also? How's that work?
Okay, so my goal would be yes. Now, you know, if I, if it was reversed, you know, obviously, I would be, you know, supporting my current employees and say, look, you can't just give them my employees and hire new ones. So, through attrition, all those ones that want to be cross-trained, I have to cross-train. So, and then, then over time, we would, you know, we'd have them full staff. And, you know, I've asked them to hold off right now on doing any hiring until we come to some kind of, you know, resolution on how this is going to proceed. The other thing I think that's important to be addressed is all those volunteers are going to be going, well, if those are all full-time positions, what about me? Because right now, our volunteers, you know, they're driving the ambulance because they want to be involved in the community, and they want to serve, right? So, the system that I would develop, when our ambulance went out on a call, we would backfill the second ambulance with the volunteers. Now, today, you're right, they're going to be babysitting the fire station. But as you mentioned, our call volume is getting to the point where, you know, one and two calls are topping on, you know, coming on top of each other. And so, that's going to give those volunteers in short order the opportunity to actually work on their own.
Okay, my next question probably. So, whose, whose pay scale and benefit scale do, who's in charge of that? Is that the Health District or the Fire?
So, and if, if employees work for the Fire District, I want them to be under our pay scale and our salary benefits, because we're part of the purse. We don't, we don't have a choice. We're part of the purse. And so, what we have to do is I, in my mind, just talking out loud, is I probably have to honor the contracts that are currently in place with those employees. And then, as we brought in new ones, I bring them to the, the scale that we're actually in for this area. And we're well-paid for this area, you know, thanks to, you know, all sorts of reasons of working.
But anyway, that's my, that's why I wanted him to come and talk to me.
Does now.
Real quick, stop the subject. Thank you. My house was literally right in front of where that fire was. So, thank you to everybody that was helping with that and coordinating with, it looked like there was a water truck.
So, since you mentioned it.
It was pretty amazing.
You know, obviously, that, that fire started by accident, which is a power overload. And the fire was running towards the Rome Street complex there. Fortunately, that water tender operator recognized that there was an issue, and he, you know, we made contact, but he came right over. And so, publicly, I'd like to thank Tapping and Construction for their quick, on-the-feet, you know, volunteerism, because I, we had our hands full, to say the least.
That's, that's amazing. You don't think about the value we have here with everybody in fire and ambulance and everything until you need it. And today, I do not think that's what.
This was a perfect example for that, and I'm glad the mayor is also one of our volunteer firefighters. So, he was actually working that fire. And if I had the fire EMS-based system, then I could put two units on it and go on like this and caught it a lot faster, instead of relying on one set, one crew to try to work that entire fire. And we're in kind of a unique situation, because our nearest neighbor is irrigan, who's on all volunteer department. And during the week, they struggle, just like every other department, trying to field personnel. And it's not uncommon for us to be over there helping them from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. So, Tapping, they're heroes in my book. Yes?
Um, first, do you have a timeline goal for this partnership to develop and?
Mine was six months ago.
Gotcha.
But I've had to jump through the hoops with what's been going on there. I feel good about, you know, the relationship that's building today. And I'm hoping that, you know, I, I'm hoping that would be done in the next couple of months, to be honest with you.
Okay, and what's the expected completion date for the new firehouse?
So, since you asked about that, we are in the design-build process right now. We've gone through the interior design and the exterior. We're starting to work on landscaping. And then, on the 21st, we'll be, this month, we'll be at a Facebook Live at noon with the chamber and with the architects. And we're going to give the floor plans and the. At noon with the chamber and with the architects, and we're going to, uh, give the, the floor plans and the, uh, elevations and, and all of that. And start really involving the community, because my goal is, you, you guys gave us the fire station, so I want the communities to see every step of that. So we'll put a camera up and they can watch the construction, but we're hoping that we can break ground by the end of summer. And then the completion date will be, uh, guaranteed by November of twenty twenty-two. Anything else? Okay, thank you guys so much for your time. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Financial report beginning June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Yes, so that was the end of our fiscal year. Um, we ended our fiscal year, um, and having received our bond proceeds. Which has allowed for us to proceed with our water and wastewater infrastructure projects, and those are on the move. Um, we did not receive the R A funds, which is the federal aid to local governments. It's gonna go to our state first, and then our state is to disperse it to the smaller cities. Uh, metropolitan cities will get it directly from the feds as well, so. Um, but the state has not awarded that to, um, the smaller cities, and so we're still waiting on that, but was not received, um, as of June thirtieth. Um, and then we did not expend all of our C D B G funds, um, which is why we had our last-minute supplemental budget meeting. Um, for the migrant headstart project, uh, due to staffing and the process of this to get approval and for the funds to be released. Uh, we're not in jeopardy of, you know, being short on funds. Uh, we've been awarded, we have the money, we have an extension that is through September twenty-eighth. Um, it's just the paperwork part that happened to, you know, come in the middle or in the fiscal year, at the beginning of the new fiscal year, that we had to do that extra stuff. Today, do you have any questions on our financials?
So our special meeting was for the C V, C D B G, correct?
Yeah.
And that's why it's a billion day here, is we transfer that to the next.
It, it's what we'll be spending here this, this full year.
Will be spending that.
Right.
And waiting for the money from the state.
Right, yep.
And, and that's to finish up, uh, across the street.
Correct, the head start.
Are there any other questions that you might have in regards of the financial statement? All right, public comments? Anybody out there that would like to share some things as far as public comments this evening?
Yes, this is Cornell Fallen. Um, I would like to bring up the discussion of the intersection of Fowler and Mount Hood, the Chaparral, uh, development. Um, it was last talked about at City Hall, I believe, two thousand nineteen. I was kind of involved with that. Um, about helping us make the corner safer, maybe a four-way stop, yeah, for different things. Um, it seems like a very busy, dangerous intersection, and I just want to bring it back up to maybe discuss it. And see your guys' inputs and just move forward and hopefully find a solution to make it safer.
Thank you, Cornell. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this?
This is, this is Kathy Street, and I am also a resident living on Mount Hood Avenue. Um, the first time we came to city council to request a four-way stop. Um, the answer came back eventually that ODOT would not allow it. And at the time, I know, um, Art, um, was on the city council, and he said he didn't think it was a good idea because he didn't want people. You know, revving their engines before they took off. But then later, he said, we need this. I didn't realize how fast people are going on this road until I started watching. Uh, we've worked with the police this summer to see if they could, um, come by more often on Mount Hood, is, you know, because there's. A lot of, a lot more traffic than I think was ever expected. Uh, because people take it as alternative to Wilson and the school zones. And as more families have moved in and more houses, I think it's just a matter of time that we're waiting to see an accident. Um, and so we strongly want something to happen.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Brenda?
So, um, given Cornell's concern and him as my friend to me, um, I drove by there. And the street sidewalk, for everybody to understand, it, it's a very small sidewalk that's just with that particular development on Chaparral. The Chaparral Development on Faler Street. There's a short little sidewalk up to the corner, and then instead of a direct right angle corner, like you might typically see at a corner. It's actually cut off at more like a forty-five, and it goes that way for, I'm, I didn't put out, measure it, but probably twelve or fifteen feet. And then there's another forty-five degree angle, and it goes down Chaparral, effectively making the corner smoother, so you can go faster around it. So if you're leaving from anywhere else on Faler, you're gonna take Chaparral as your cutoff to avoid Wilson. You've got pretty much a quick turn there, and it, it did look like with people's driveways right at the corner. That it could cause a problem if you try to back out of your driveway, or like I mentioned earlier, if a small child decides to run from his mom at the beginning of the day. You, you run the risk that somebody coming down the street wouldn't have time to stop if they didn't see you in time. Just because the corner's designed for faster.
Is there anybody else that had some comments or discussion?
Um, real quick on that, I do have, uh, security footage of my house, and I do have footage of multiple incidents, if anybody needs to see it. There's fire marks on that, on the particular sidewalk that only leads up to a mailbox. Um, but that sidewalk is a different, different day, different discussion anyways on that side. Um, it was put in very rudely, very fast on my behalf, but different topic there. But I, there is lots of marks and lots of proof there. Um, even Martinez, one of the police officers. One time was in his private vehicle as we were trying to cross right there, and he was cutting somebody off as it developed house five, six, seven, and eight. And I imagine I could, he would be another good resource that lives one house down is how quiet fast it is over there.
So what does the city have to do in order to find out if that's something that we need to address or do? Is there a survey, or is there something that we do as a city to find out if it's a problem area? Or how do we address the concern?
I'll ask the public works to go out. Um, like I say, they've been, we poured the rest of that sidewalk. Because, because of the mail, because before, when they came, it was just gravel. And they were walking, the folks that lived there to get their mail had to walk into the street. So we poured it, we had them pour a scene at sidewalk and put the mail receivable so they could get that, but. I, I agree that the traffic, I think, is probably more than we anticipated. And, uh, a four-way stop is a tad bit difficult to get. That's the only part I know of, I'm not, not the street.
Is it a situation where your squeaky wheel, like, get action? I, 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 I mean, you know, but that means there is a process that has to happen. You can't just throw a stop sign. Right, and that's kind of what I would, and that's what the, the public works department would work on.
If, 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 if you, if you did that, you would probably have one on every corner of every street in the town, uh, just because everybody wants to stop sign. So there is a process that you have to follow, uh, to determine where to place traffic control devices and where they can't be placed.
So is that something that, I'm sorry?
No, that's fine.
Is that something that we would, uh, request through the police department or through city works?
It, it would through, through public works, we did research.
There's public works.
I think that you request it here now, and then I go and I talk to people.
Okay.
And try to get some kind of re, you know.
So we, we talked about this before, and it was drawn as a radius. And that was the real problem, is a lot of rounded radius, because then that wasn't gonna slow down at all. We talked about doing it ninety. It wasn't feasible, the road wasn't wide enough, there isn't enough easement to do at ninety. So I think the forty-five, forty-five was kind of their best they could do at the time. Um, and it is better than it was, because before it was radius, there was, there was nothing to stop you from, nothing to, to break you. Yeah, it was, it was almost egging you on to go around it faster. The forty-five has health, I think, I mean, I've been down there several times. Um, but that being said, it's still not safe, right? Still, there's still issues there.
Well, I believe that with everything that I've heard, it's a safety issue, lives are at stake, so I think it needs to happen. And you have to study, find out if it's feasible, and we need to go forward with it to make it happen.
Another question I have, sorry, is, so I seen, has just rezoned north of us towards the power lines for Gary Mon's new development. And eventually that might tie into a relief road for Kinkade, everything else around town. So there'd be like, uh, Oregon Trail Boulevard to the west into Fowler. I, or anything is out, but I'm just looking at a lot of the options, if a four-way stop or anything is a very big problem. Maybe that's something that could be between a developer, the city, different funds that could be maybe also looked into, a relief for that road.
Is that a question, uh, of where we travel a bar in the urban renewal area? Do you recall? In the east.
I don't think.
I thought all that's.
I kind of thought we're.
No.
Boulevard, but I was just curious.
Boy, it's nice if you, if I'm prepared for these things.
Oh, it's a decent question. I mean, if, if we don't have an answer, then we don't have an answer.
We'll, we'll, we can find an answer.
Central, central is right out here. West. Is.
Behind Frontier, true.
Yes, and I don't know if it goes, I don't know if west went all the way to Faler, is, is, is where, is the dance I'm doing, is, you know.
I thought we did a portion that was east that included part of Faler, because that's where we put in the.
That would be where we want to end up, probably. That would be probably about the end, for sure.
I think so, it's just right there. I think, I thought it might be sitting very far south, it didn't include Wilson Road. Or north, past.
Central.
Road past Chaparral. Well, that would be pretty narrow.
Mr. Mayor, uh, since this is not an agenda item, I have to request that you are advised.
For the, they had three minutes, correct?
Take it under advisement, have staff review.
Yes, we'll do that. Um, I appreciate that. Uh, let's see, Cornell, or Kathy and Cornell. I, I would encourage you to not forget about it and, uh, and to, uh. Don't hesitate if, if you think that we're not doing anything about it, to come back on and ask a question about it.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to bring it back up, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ben, I don't know what the answer will be, but I think it's worth addressing and sharing concerns from our community to the council.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for pushing it to.
I believe Renee would change her life.
Renee?
Yes.
Turn.
Um, so we just want to start out and say thank you to Morro County Unified Direct District for funding the fireworks this year. Um, we had a great show and we had a great time celebrating with the entire community. Uh, today, the chamber attended the groundbreaking for one of our members, Boardman Foods, and we just wanted to once again congratulate them on the expansion project that is going on there. Um, this month, as Chief Hughes mentioned, our luncheons will start to be back in person. The fire department will be there giving an update on the new fire station and what the progress is there. And we will also be on Facebook Live, uh, broadcasting his presentation for people who are unable to attend in person. And then next month's, uh, luncheon, we are moving it back a week to August twenty-fifth, and we'll have Representative Greg Smith on giving a legislative update. As well as honoring our Morro County Fair four H and F F A kids. And then yesterday was the big announcement for the Think Big Space in the Sage Center, which will be a collaborative STE, STEM. Project between a few of our members, such as the Port of Moro, Amazon Web Services, and Morro County School District. And the school district is currently accepting applications for a STEM teacher to oversee the space. Science Fridays are also in full swing at the Sage Center, and along with OSU, we've put on some great day camps for the kids. And this Friday, we'll be teaching them all about bees and pollinators at the day camp. Uh, the B C D A Dog Park project is also coming along great along Front Street. The gravel parking lot for the soccer field and dog park has been put in, and seagrass has been laid down for the dog park as well. And then lastly, this Friday, we'll have, uh, Oregon gubernatorial candidate in town. Jessica Gomez will be at the Riverfront Center at five thirty P M for a meet and greet with the Boardman community. She wants to just exchange some ideas about the challenges facing eastern Oregonians and, you know, get our feel on what we're looking for in a governor. So we want to formally invite the mayor and all of our counselors to that. And we also strongly encourage everyone here today to attend and anyone in the Boardman community so that we can get our voice heard during the election. Thank you, that's all we have today.
Thank you, Renee. Any other public comment? All right, having hearing that, we'll go to our Action Items Resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-one, renaming streets for Bailey Park subdivision.
Okay, this is the resolution dash twelve dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution to rename the trade winds and. Airspace to the side streets to connecting streets of Bailey Park within the city of Oregon. And. I don't know if we discussed it, I don't, anyway, I'm gonna tell you what this is about.
Okay.
Uh, when Bailey, when, when we're putting the new subdivision in, called Bailey Subdivision. There's a couple of short streets over there, and they're listed here, and so to extend that, because there's going to be like, uh. About a hundred lots in the Bailey subdivision, so we could change seven lots address, street address through this motion. Rather than, so that, you know, you didn't drive halfway down the street and it would be Clarence or whatever. And then you would get all the way to Sonoma for two more, you know, houses or something. So that's the reason for this, is to make that subdivision, all the streets.
Just streamlining the streets is basically what we're doing.
Yes, and it's, and where there was only seven involved, because sometimes, you know, you get, people don't like to change their addresses if there's fifty people, you know, that this isn't. And it wouldn't, it would be just their street name, not necessarily their address.
So does the subdivision choose the names?
They're very cute names.
That's what, that was my question.
Yes.
Who chose, who chose the name, and how are they deciding? That was my question.
The subdivision, the developers.
The developer chooses the names, and then, and if we say no?
I don't think we've ever really, yeah.
Okay, I'm just, just asking.
Well, I think they, I think they try, like, if you know, if over here in Sunrise where we're changing them. See, those were all, um, desert names, dunes and, and, and so, and you know, like, and maybe another section of town. They go with all time birds' names or.
Mountains in Oregon.
Yeah, and mountains, yeah, so.
So they, they chose these names because of it's a great life?
Yes, they, they really, they. They just think this is gonna be a great little community and, you know.
Well, like their food deals.
Yeah.
I ask a question. Um, why not just continue the streets that are in?
Um, why not just continue the streets that are in existence through that development?
Because it's, it, it's much easier to continue, like I said, for a short distance than to rename all of the, we could have changed all the plat- names, I'm sure. But if the developer chose, he chose the names he wanted his streets.
Planted it with these names in place.
Yes, I think so.
The assumption that they would connect to be short streets in existence, rather than planning in advance that Sonoma would go straight through. Okay.
I think that's the answer.
I see, thank you.
Because, and you know, plotting is, uh, another whole ballgame. So anyway, let's start with that. This is City of Boardman Resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution to rename the fragrance at Sunrise, care space to side streets to connecting streets of Bailey Park within the city of Oregon.
Don't mind that we change, reading these streets. I move that we pass Resolution twelve dash twenty-one. I'll get right.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Can we have a second? Is there any additional discussion that we'd like to have regarding to this? They, uh, this is not a roll call, I would say, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, so Resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-one passes. Other business memorandum of understanding press three fiscal agent. Is this not a, this, we don't have to have like multiple reads on this, do we?
This, this is just so that, uh, the city of Oregon is willing to do the fiscal work for the press three. We do it for press two, then I volunteered March for press three.
So should be in the discussion.
Isn't that, is that how that works?
Is that how?
And you say, thank you, boss, right?
Well, you know, it never hurts to know where the money's at.
We'll get that.
Well, I would that we establish this memorandum, agree that for the press three board, fiscal agents.
And a motion and a second, is there any discussion that we'd like to have, or suggest?
This isn't a lot of bookkeeping, you know, you, you write, you know, maybe twenty checks a year, usually all about one time, and keep some traffic money, but it's, you know, it's, it's not like a walk around, let me just put that.
I guess.
All right, so we got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone who opposes? And she carries. Police report.
And we should have received the copy of the, uh, report for June of this year, and as you can see, the numbers are a little higher than they were in the past months, but, uh, to give you a definitive why I can't do that. Several reasons that have come into play, so, um, it is busy, our officers are very busy. And, uh, that, that almost, well, at least half those calls are service, are, almost are initiated, so, um, there's a lot going.
On, I think, one of those calls about two weeks ago, I was pretty grateful Jerry talked there. I was sorry.
We, yeah, I, I, I have to tell you that we have outstanding team. They, they're constantly paying attention to what's going on in the area. I get calls from people, you know, that think that our doors open at night, the officers got hold of them to let them know. Those, those are good things, those things that don't happen, so, um, I'm very happy with, uh, our, our, our force, um, they're very community oriented, so. Aside from that, I don't have much else to pass on, we're shorting the radio data district to, the radios that we put in our cars initially, uh, or Harris radios and the systems for the regular data district is a data system, which they're sister companies. But for some reason, our radios weren't working right on their system, so they replaced all of our radios, five grand a radio, um, and that'll be, it was installed now. So hopefully we'll have all the radio issues fixed, uh, and it only happened in Portland, because we took the initiative to, to, to put radios in the car before the rest of the district, uh, trying to have communications both with state police and, and Gillon County as well. So we were a little more prepared, but at the end of the day, companies don't jack all the, uh, understand, but luckily they were, they do, it's just, uh, replace the radios, so.
Thank you. Is there any questions for you? Building Department.
Last stage.
Last stage.
No, it's not, so you're about average, a little lower, a little higher than the last, but the thing I kind of wanted to point out is that we sold more permits in here. Of course, that'll change this month, because they thought that their P D S will be, we need to start drawing a wall. That's about it. This is it?
Any questions? Public Works.
Is there, and this is just for your information, but in there, I'm sending you rather.
Do you have any comments or, uh, concerns or questions about public works, partner?
During this hot weather, really tough in the water.
As far as city, usage for the city citizens, just in, just everybody in general.
Everybody in general. It, it puts a, a stress sometimes on that. We're not going to do a water system. Just because we didn't have anything else to do, I guess, because it's getting really tight, those pumps are, you know, probably two years old, and it's just not. Uh, years like this, it's, it's a stress on everybody, starts water.
There any committee reports? City manager, do you have any, any additional you'd like to share then?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, I, I assume you've read my, uh.
Yes.
Your report.
Very illuminating.
Well, and two, I, I did a handwritten thing down on the bottom, because I didn't want to go to page two. Well, it just seems like a waste.
It sounds like a Facebook question, why don't you do it without showing your age?
So anyway, and then the other thing, I like, I had them lay out by yesterday, because last week, uh, people asked about the, the road, the road out at, uh, um, the Navy bombing range, and so you can see where, if, you can see where Los Truck Stop is, so you, you see that that is Tower Road that's coming up there. And where the main existing road is, you can see how that white line goes kind of across that whole section of property, and it says CSS Farms. Okay, that, that whole section in there belongs to the city. And the Navy has always just cut across there to get over to their entrance to their, the.
Bombardment.
But. So we're proposing, and everybody's, I think, in agreement, to go on down Tower Road and then just go straight in to that, to meet where the Navy road is, and that way we can, well, I, because where you see CSS Farms is that we sold them that triangle right there, they would have taken it. If that had, road hadn't been there, that wouldn't be shaped like that, but, and so I'm gonna go back and talk to them again and see if they don't want to buy some property just to square up their property. Because they, they can always add another story there, so I think the agreement so far is that, uh, the city will do the engineering, which isn't gonna take much, and, um, I think everybody's gonna have to give in maybe five thousand dollars, we're not expecting this to be a huge money public, so.
This is an agreement with you and the Navy, is that what this is?
And the county.
And the county.
Yes.
So they're in favor of that change too?
Yes.
Well, we are trackers.
Well, it's, it, it's real, it's real, if you drive out there, it's real marshy, right there on Tower Road, right where it's about to turn off to go to the Navy. You know, there's always been cat tails and, and stuff, so we're gonna make the road so that it goes farther to the some direction west, maybe, you know, just so you don't have to go through those southwest areas. And we have notified the farmer back here, and we've not heard from them, so I, I, I don't know why they would care whether, I mean, it makes as much sense to come there as to go halfway across the road. So, uh, oh, I was gonna bring, uh, our insurance company, C I S, sent us a clock, I meant to bring it in and show you. A nice clock that we've had insurance with them for forty years, and so they sent us a, for forty years.
Is that like a retirement clock?
Kind of. So, uh.
That'll be an insurance clock.
In, in your pocket was, uh, the, uh, we put in the Jappies fact finding, things and other things we wanted you to read those so that you understood, um, how, how that worked.
It's very in depth, I appreciate it.
Well, and you should have wanted great history, because you're all pretty fairly new, and so I, this is really good, yeah. And, uh, I put in here, oh, on, I don't know, it says, uh, our taxing district, taxing code numbers. This, if you live in Boardman, this list shows you what your taxes are, if you live in, it's twenty dollars and twenty-one point eight six cents. So, you know, our tax rate is four dollars and twenty-one cents, so. That's fine, that's, this isn't, that's not our factory, four eighteen is not our factory.
The, the one in here is dated two thousand fourteen, so I think this one's a little outdated.
I think so too. But anyway, so when people, you know, a lot of developers, different people will ask you, how much is, how much is your total taxes? For Boardman, you can tell them, like, a tag deal of twenty dollars, and they're in here.
And that's per pound, right?
Yes. I also included in here the traffic study, B C D A paid for this traffic study, because a lot of developers are asking us about how much traffic's on the X Street. So if you, you'll have to look about the location of where it was taken, but they have the ability to do, you know, a twenty-four hour time rule, so it really gives you a lot of nice information for, maybe just to know, I don't know, so, anyway. The bid for the Wall Lane, Luke Rose went out on the ninth, which was.
Friday.
Friday. And we'll open them on the second of August, and, uh, I think in the end, we're only going to do the east side of the road. But, uh, we're not getting any movement necessarily, and so it is what it is. We interviewed for the, um, Recorder's H R position, uh.
And they're the ones that are on with us tonight.
And, well, the two finalists.
The two finalists.
We, we did it, I don't know. Our, our base here are running together, but, uh, yeah, last Thursday, the, and then, uh, so I asked the two finalists to listen to the meeting tonight and to write up the minutes, because men are taking.
Very important.
Well, it's become more interesting to me, because men taking isn't, you're not taking dictation. You know, this isn't a word for word dictation, men are sorry, it's the feel of the meeting and who makes the motions of this. So I asked them if they would do that, and then we'll have a second, uh, interview with them, I think, on Thursday. So I'm anxious for that, because we're anxious to get that position filled. The only other thing perhaps I would have is, uh, some of you have, have worked here for a long time with a lot of us. And Mike Wilson was the man that worked to sell our, uh, he helped us with the bond issue, he helped the fire department, I'm sorry, Mike has left, but, uh, and he helped raise funds for the clinic when we were trying to get the clinic paid for and working. He worked the bond issue for the Boardman and the Raina Park when we were selling the bond for. And everybody, he's the guy that would sit out in front of the grocery store and pass out flyers and stuff, so, uh, and he called on all the businesses about, can you make a donation, and would you do this, I mean, if, I'm, when, if I stop and think about it, I'm going to be really amazed at the amount of people in Boardman or that will have known him. Last night, he was killed in a car accident out by Sand Hill. And so, yeah, it's really a sad deal, because he, you know, he's one of those guys that didn't live here, but he knew, and he knew a lot about us, just because, like you said, so when we wanted to pass the bond issue, and most of you that were involved with the bond issue that we passed for the water sewer, he was the guy that came and did the Facebook live or this, et cetera, I mean, he's, was a personal kind of fellow, so.
He's from where?
He lived in Vancouver, and he was, he worked, he was, had been to Enterprise, he's been doing a lot of work up in Enterprise for their health clinic, and they've got a like an art, maybe like a theater, I guess, would be up there, but he's been trying to raise funds, he, he's a fundraiser, he knows, he knew lots of, of people in the legislature and stuff like that, and so knew how to, had lots of contacts, well, and Boardman, the rest should miss him a lot.
Yes.
Because, you know, we're, we're kind of getting to the end of, like, the big major companies that, um, sponsored some of the rooms. Their obligations are getting full, filled up, and so, you know, I was thinking that we should hire him to go do the, you know, just the shaking hands and keeping in touch with people, and so now, I don't know, I don't know who we would even begin to hire, just because he's been, well, you know how you just get people that you know, like, and call and that, they'll do the job, and then know who to go talk to and that stuff, so, anyway, that was pretty sad. He was wanting to get married this year, and, uh, leaves a mother and a daughter and a fiance. So that's all my good news, is that true, yep, um, so I think that's, uh, if you, you could, if you feel so inclined, you could phone your health district, uh, board members and encourage them perhaps to take very seriously, um, joining forces with the, with the fire department on, on our ambulance service here in Portland. I think it never hurts to have people just, you know, know that there are. You know, know that there are other people interested in what's going on. Not just the five or six people that, that might directly affect, you know, like my job or my job or something. That's it. Thank you.
Counselors, any counselors have anything to share?
Yes, so I was approached and asked about the broadband, where that's going or how it's going. The connections to thousands. Seems like it hasn't. He, so they seen it for a while, but then it's anybody around, they're wondering if they're gonna get theirs or not.
I think that, I think the hardest part is the timing, I think that they're just struggling, there's so much. Many people that need hooked up that they're struggling with that, um. Yeah.
So it's just, it's just a slow process?
Well, and we're not, we're not, right now, we're not putting in new. Well, okay, that's not exactly true, come to think about it, because we're putting in new over on. So help me out, what's the subdivision, River Ridge?
Yes, River Ridge.
Yeah.
Eagle Drive.
Yeah. So they are putting some new in over there, but we're trying to get. What we have hooked up. And, uh, I think. I know everybody's sick of hearing this, and I'm sick of hearing it, and I'm gonna be sick of saying it, but if you could just get employees.
Right.
It's, it's not that they don't have money to pay an employee, you just cannot find them.
On that note, P T fast has moved to Boardman and they're in the office space there at two oh two North Main. And they're after hustling, you know, I see them every day, had a chance to talk with them. I know they're working as best as they can.
Yeah, because I know I quit in my request, but.
Well, people down by me who are asking me.
Sure.
Because they seen them, they were there for a while, and then they just kinda, you know, the trucks were parked on the road and they were doing stuff, and then. For the last month and a half, they've kinda just haven't seen them there.
But I did notice that they were down with the new, it looks like they set up shop there.
How many companies are doing it, is it just them?
Just them, they're the, they're the ones that we had the contract with to put the initial thing in, and down in your, in your neighborhood. See, they were lucky that they were going to get fiber to the home. This isn't like just putting up the pole.
Right.
And, and me calling them, having come through me, uh.
Connection.
So, yes, it's much slower down on that end of town, but they should have. You know, I think everybody so far that has been connected is, uh, happy with the service and the speed and stuff.
Fine, except.
I do, I do, I saw them on Boardman Avenue third, uh, working on fiber. Meeting too fast, they have people there, so. Uh, what exactly they were doing, I don't know, but they were there. I just need to have something I can answer for, just that, that they are still coming, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Slow.
No, they know, they've got, they've got an obligation and. Tor is not going to let them out.
Anybody else have anything to share?
I was wondering how the census.
Yeah, me too.
Population number.
You know, it's funny you should say that because this morning, uh, I had someone from O D A, um, she's new working with O D A. And, uh, and so she was, you know, out and out, and. So of course, the, what we call the small cities allotment, which is a. Hundred thousand brand, we just finished one, you know, we used it on, uh.
Columbia.
Yeah, on Columbia. And so I. Email O D A and said, because you have to be five thousand and under. So I emailed them and I seen it was out to. I said, so how do you decide what your census, your population is? And they wrote me back and they said, whatever. The state and P S U says your census are, the day you fill out that form, that's the population we go by. So it's like, I mean, we're in good shape, four hundred and. Yeah, I mean, they're four thousand something, but we're quite a waste in that figure from the five thousand. So Barry took her out and showed her a couple of places because we're looking at, uh. Small city allotment is one thing, safe routes to school is another. Safe routes to school, we would really like to put that walking path from like Desert Springs. Is that what they're calling it?
Desert Springs.
Desert Springs.
Bay of Vista?
So, so that so the people don't have to walk on, uh, Paulson. And so, and, and she, and when you want to get the visual. And then they, they took her down to, uh, the port exit. And, you know, we were talking about, you know, like how bad the traffic is and all that, and. And he said, just as they were getting there, you're kind of looking at that view when you're coming down the Laurel Lane and you're looking. And he was saying, well, and that lane, it has a straight through and the next lane has to stop. He said that truck that was right there started pulling out and nearly was gonna hit us and. And he's, she, she got the pull of that. What it's like to drive through that intersection. So when those kind of people. See, this is why connections are so important, is because when she reads that application, she's gonna go, oh, yeah, I was gonna kill them. You know, so it's, it's always good that you give.
Anybody else?
Um, I do just wanna share that, um, our annual audit is scheduled for the week of August second, so here shortly. Um, and our auditing firm is Oxford and the Clinic LLC, um, out of Pendleton, so. Wish me luck, I'm gonna be very busy.
Good luck.
Be a busyer.
Yeah, she crosses the piece and goes to the.
Oh, is it? I, not really, we have a good, last year was the first time.
Anybody else? I just had one thing, I was pretty excited about the, uh, of course, it's live events, I was excited that. Individuals were willing to step in, and I, I'm hoping that the entities that are out there are willing to help accept those. People to be able to volunteer and to try to help and not just leave it on one. Organization that has to do every, everything on their own, that maybe there could be more partnerships and, uh. Cohesiveness in getting things done, and I think that, I think that was a good example of some people stepping up. Saying this is what we need to do, and, uh, and in the future being able to work with our partners. To be able to make events in order to work in Boardman, you know. So that's all I have to say. And with that, I'll adjourn this meeting.